Five o'clock and I'm going to call this meeting to order. I have received regrets from Counselor Bell, who was with us for the one o'clock meeting, but we do have quorum and I'm just going to invite you to join me in a moment of silent reflection before we begin. Thank you. Is there any disclosure of pecuniary interest? I see none, but should it occur, why bring it forward at that time? I think we need a motion to move into committee of the whole at this point, Counselor Bartley and Counselor Forder, thank you. And now, yeah, so we're doing that at 5:00 PM. And I think at this point, I'm just going to turn the microphone over to our CAO, Kim Buckham, to tell us about the fees and charges for 2025.
So I just want to mention that we have had some updates and I think those are maybe worth just highlighting and going through to some degree. So just maybe I'll just walk through them actually, and then if anybody wants to stop or we can circle back and then have any questions. But just to note that planning pre consultations charge on package page five, I hate getting into these numbers, so I apologize, but it does start off with Schedule C Planning Services. So I just wanted to note that the removed of the major charges but kept the minor. So just an update there. Pickleball rates, again, just as a note, there's a contract in place for users and we're moving to that model. So I think it's still in the process of being signed, but nonetheless, it will be in place for the 2025. On page, again, don't quote me totally, but 44 under the box office fees. We've done, I just wanted to make sure that everyone felt comfortable because we did do just a double check that there is a 10% fee per ticket and that there is a fee for, that's on top of the online Realtor Ticketmaster fee. So in other words, we ensure that we're always getting a fee for tickets. Yeah, go ahead.
I thought you were kind of removing, I thought all tickets had to be purchased through box office.
I think the same, if there is a third party, we're still going to get our fee. So I don't think we're saying exactly the same thing. That's why I'm just reiterating that portion. So in other words, we're not walking away from a fee, whether or not that's third party or not. We're always going to ensure. So the point being is, I think at the end of the day that we do have some revenue stream coming in from Meaford Hall. Yep. I will say there was a clarification. We had talked about Bogner Hall Riverside. Why are there no rates for those? And that's actually because they do actually set their own rates with their own. They're not in our bylaws. I don't know that they set bylaws. Is that true to say, Val? Do they set in their committee and their board? Do they actually set their own?
I don't believe they have complete bylaws, but I think they have rules.
But all that to say, they set their own rates and that's why they don't have any in our books. And Woodford's fees actually do come into ours and they're all mentioned already there. We have a cancellation of rates for Memorial Park. So there was just a question about how do we process that? It's actually through Camp Life. So if there is a cancellation, it's a $25. It goes right through the app Camp Life. There was a question around, you know, are we going to really charge Rotary to use the harbor or the pavilion? And the answer is yes, we are looking to charge all users fairly across the board. And again, I recognize that probably there's some discussion there, but nonetheless, we do see that the facility is going to need continual maintenance and that's what these revenues go towards. Fees for trucks and equipment. There was just, I think, a question around, you know, why are these fees going up so much? We did look into it a little bit further verifying, of course, that yes, of course, fuel is going up. And then also ensuring that our cost for goods and products for the maintenance is also part of that package. So there wasn't much change in an actual maintenance side of things, but the fuel is the main leading reason for the increase for the fees for trucks and equipment. Commercial rates for Meaford Hall. There was a question about, you know, why did the rates not change for Meaford Hall from 2024 to 2025? It's part of the analysis package that we'll go over next week, but nonetheless, just to say that there was the due diligence of reviewing the expenditures. And although they're not exactly the same, they do look like they'll come into the same at the end of this year. And so there has been no change based on the current expenses in comparison to revenues for 2024. So the rates are staying the same for the Meaford Hall. Then we are looking to add a few items. One of those being $1,000 legal fee charge under Schedule E, including also a legal deposit of $10,000 under Schedule E. This will assist us with our number two risk that we talked about earlier today. And I know we'll talk about quite a bit going forward, but those are our, are to assist us with cost recoveries for folks that are looking for land titles and/or services in which we would require legal assistance and/or advice. So that would help us recover that. And we've added back in the subsidy fee that was previously, I think we were either discussing it, but it's into Schedule A. Yeah, it was just removed in the first draft, but we've proposed it back. And those are the highlights of the things that I'll say came back in. Please feel free to ask any questions and I have Justin behind me. If you also wanted a more thorough breakdown, I'm sure he's much better at answering.
Discussion, questions, Counselor Bartley?
Thank you, Mary Katner. So the Rotary Pavilion, have the Rotary group been talked to about this?
I was gonna say, no, I don't believe so.
I don't think it's right to do that without bringing them in on this, so.
I may, your worship, I am a Rotarian acknowledging that. And no, the club is not yet aware of this charge and I haven't, you know, broached them with it. But at some point in time, that will need to occur and they will not be happy, I can tell you that. It's really only used, you know, not often during the year, but certainly for the Rotary Fish Fry, which is a major fundraiser for the club. That is primarily the occasion, but there's also, you know, groups like the Golden Town Cruisers and the Sunday Night Library Concerts. So if we're looking to charge the Sunday Night Library Concerts that provide all their proceeds back to the library, then that's a bit of a Peter and Paul thing. So that's another one that, you know, I think council should discuss because they, everything, you know, is volunteer and the funds go directly to the library. So that one, I think, has even more impact than Rotary. But yes, Rotary did build the pavilion and the agreement was that they would always have free use of it.
Yeah, I think the opportunity here was just to say everybody and with exceptions. So it's trying to minimize the exceptions to the rule and to apply the fees and charges across the board. Again, in most cases, this isn't to make money, it's to actually pay for, in this case, the facility itself. And in other cases, it's like I say, with the legal fees, it's so that we don't have additional costs going out.
So is the Rotary Club in writing that they wouldn't pay for this ever?
Your worship, if I may, I'll have to confirm whether there's anything written. There is an agreed, written agreement with Meaford Hall for, you know, the meeting times when they're there on Monday evenings. I don't know that it's in writing for the pavilion. And Alex may tell me this is not an appropriate question for this meeting, but I think this is the reason for the charges being changed and increased this year was the renovation of the pavilion. So my question is, how did that get so out of hand from what we had approved as a budget number for that? And if it was getting out of hand, why didn't that come back to us? Because we could have built a new pavilion for less than we renovated this one for.
So I think in regards, and I don't want to put you on the spot, but I, because I don't have all the details about the pavilion's renovations, nor the exact notice or motion that we did put forward about it. So I can't really speak exactly to why those, you know, got to be as expensive. But I can say, even if we had done some cost estimates earlier, I do believe during the work, like actually while they were doing work, they were also having to figure out how to complete the work because of the type of work that it was. I believe it started off as, and maybe Bart, you might know a little bit of history here, actually, now that I think about it. It started off as one thing and then because they didn't plan for some of the depth of the footings, and this is maybe where you take over, Bart.
Sure, sure. I think the scope changed somewhat on this project and they kind of got into it more. And some of the work which was planned became a lot more difficult than they had hoped. And it kind of moved a little bit in a different direction than we had hoped. It wasn't my project, I was just this inspector, but I think generally, you know, there were things that weren't foreseen and it was just, it became difficult project.
And then in addition to why doesn't it come back? I think that's where we do have to look at, I'll say, the overall process. I do know that they were rushed for time because of the 150th birthday. So I know at that last moment, it got really, I'll say, critical that it just happened. So whether or not, you know, I'll be very honest, I don't know if the team even gave it the consideration. I don't know that there is a required, if you will, step to come back and to say, but I also do know that they were under a lot of pressure to get it done in time for the use of the 150th birthday, I think was the, if I remember the timelines, again, just kind of all lessons learned. To your point about what can we do differently going forward when it comes to these types of projects and how much scope change. And something I actually also think that we're handling differently in our capital projects is about, and I think it'll even come out more so, but, you know, the cost of some of the products and goods are not at the rates that they used to be. And even a 1%, 2%, we're talking like 20% to 50% changes of some of the materials and goods in construction. So our capital projects, the original budgets, they need to be reexamined. And that's what we're, you know, about to start.
Sorry, Counselor Greenfield?
So on the subject of the Rotary Club, if they're going to perhaps have to pay a fee for events they present there, to me, that automatically translates into that they're going to have to charge for people coming to events or charge more going to their events. So that's, it's a spinoff. It's not just the Rotary Club. It's already have problems. It's, it's the people who attend, tend to advance. So I think maybe there's, you know, more, more to this than just, just for the Rotarians to have to come forward.
Sorry, Counselor Bartley?
Well, going back to it, because it is a Rotary Pavilion, I suggest if it's not going to be free, it's got to be a reduced rate. That's my opinion. We can, can we do that or is there any appetite around the table?
Could have, now that we're into the weeds here, could you tell us just exactly how many similar situations? There's, I think there's at least one or two other situations and I'm, it's not coming to mind, but there's another situation or two where, where the people who are going to be, you know, faced with paying for the facility, they're, yeah.
Help me out.
There was another one.
Other than, I'm trying to think of the donated spaces, so that's why.
Are you just talking the pavilion or are you talking?
No, I think there are parallel situations where, well, I guess, yeah, utilizing the pavilion, like by the use made by the net shed, which, you know, we just discussed. But it seemed to me there was another one as well, where a group was going to be, you know, kind of blindsided by the fact that we're going to have to charge for.
I was gonna say, I think probably, if you will, blindsided is probably the case across the board because what we're trying to do is to give everybody. So nobody has been asked, how much would you like to pay? Instead, we said, this is the cost of this structure. This is the for, you know, forward costs.
I know. It will, okay, it's the Meaford Cultural Foundation utilizing the hall. So that's another case where, and I'm just thinking, we, I believe we also have been contributing to the. Oh, okay. I see. I see what's, I see what's happening. Okay.
I was gonna say, I do think we still end up with.
Here no evil, see no evil. So when you come to that case, I think that we also support them to some degree financially and that may not be possible this year. So it'll be a double whammy in that case, you know what I mean? So I think the repercussions, like I just think we're going to make enemies every which way in trying to resolve something like this. And that's why I'm very much in favor of substantial fees to have a, have Airbnb or Airbnb. Because.
For the Rotary, like.
No, 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 no.
Oh, sorry.
I'm fixing metaphors here.
Gotcha.
We, in our last meeting.
Revenues.
An hour ago, we had a conversation about making sure that we.
Yes, yes.
That we paid for, you know, the cost of regulating things.
And it's kind of in the spirit of the same, right? Is that, but at the same time, you know, this is where maybe those structures are a little bit different because more than just the Rotary uses them. And to the point, I think, again, Rotary has a lot of their activities where the whole community is involved. And it's, you know, tickets and it's, you know, to your point. It's not just the Rotary using it for only Rotary business. There's a lot of community event that also happens in there, music on Sundays.
I don't know of the Golden Town Cruisers, whether they pay a fee or not, but I'd, I'd be surprised if they have to pay a fee. I imagine they're going to have to go somewhere else, probably.
I would have to do a further review of who gets what.
Yeah.
There is a contract that's expiring for Meaford Cultural Foundation. And, and there is a contract that we're supposed to be working on with Pickleball. And then it would be, I guess, the Rotary possibly, a type of contract possibly?
We were looking at any fees. If there's no fees for Rotary, then I wouldn't get into a contract to say nothing to pay here. So it just comes back to, you know, is it a blanket for everybody? Or are we going to have select groups that are waived? In which case, we can look to doing that kind of guidance and tell me, Alex, can we do that today? Yeah, no waiving. No, that's what I don't think so. Yeah.
Counselor Yuri?
I'm back. Because, no, I didn't hear any of that. What I didn't hear was MCF and a five-year contract. And you're right, they, they are now kind of looking for new contracts. So that's going to go in front of council anyway. So that's the same kind of conversation here. If you're looking for a special dispensation, ask for it specifically. I'm with you. I'm kind of thinking they built the thing in goodwill and gave it to the municipality. I'm with you. I think that should buy some kind of leverage. I can tell you that MCF pays when we, they do MIF or do whatever, so that there is, you know, whatever. They put $700,000 in the building, they still pay for whatever. Rotary did build that and donate it to the municipality. So that, to me, seems to buy a certain different level of understanding or.
Consideration.
Consideration. So I'm with you, Steve. I would think that I'd be more inclined to make a one-off where if somebody, otherwise, we're going to discourage other groups from saying, yeah, I'd love to build you something, but if I'm going to have to pay to use it, why would I do that? Kind of scenario.
I think the same could be said is then the people wanting to use it would say, why not me too? My event is really cool and I'm a nonprofit. So I get, but if I'm thinking about this, to kind of also, if, again, kind of to Val's point, if we are to look to do a reduced rate, we would do, or a different rate than here, we would do a contract. That would assume there would be some rate, but maybe a marginal rate and something different. For those that use it multiple times, we'd come up with some parameters because again, I don't know that we want a contract for a one-time use. But nonetheless, then it would come in from the council. You could make the decision on the nominal amount. Sorry, go ahead, Sue.
And if I may, your worship, so this is going to include the Scarecrow Invasion and their workshops to build scarecrows and that they won't have the funding to, you know, to pay the $60 or whatever it is for the number of times they do these workshops. And that's a big economic driver for the community. So we're going down a pretty deep hole here with that.
Is there also maybe an interest of just saying all not-for-profits don't have to pay? And then those that are doing it for, I don't know if that's ever happened, but a profit event?
That, that makes a lot of sense. That has a lot more appeal, I would say. Because at a very, I shouldn't speak ahead of everybody here, but at the very least, you know, we ought to be almost negotiating where we go from here with the Rotary Club on this inasmuch as they, you know, built it in good faith and, you know, made it a, an asset of the, the community. And it's, won't take very long for the Rotary Club members to pick up on this meeting and start tuning into YouTube and seeing, you know? So I think that we, we really, we have the cart before the horse here to a degree when we're trying to change a fundamental, you know, principle here that the way we've. And I think we can explain why we're doing this, but I think that explanation really needs to be handled well first before we make the change.
So, sorry, are we looking to then apply? Or are we, I felt like we were moving completely away from.
Yeah, I like.
The Rotary and/or also other not-for-profits.
I like your idea of not-for-profits not having to pay for these facilities.
Oh, your worship, there's always been kind of a general understanding in place that if you don't book the pavilion and there's nobody using it, you can kind of go in and set up and do whatever you want to do, which is I think kind of what happens on Tuesday nights for the Cruisers. They just kind of arrive and everybody just kind of knows that, except it's not a formal booking. Now, honestly, this is going to hurt other groups, particularly the Sunday night concerts and scarecrow much more than it's going to financially hurt Rotary because we use it mostly, yeah, for fundraisers. So, but those two particular groups are going to really be challenged and struggle if they have to pay that fee every week for the times that they use. And particularly with the Sunday nights, that money all comes back to us. So it just doesn't make sense to charge and then it just means it's less money coming to the library.
So can we take a amendment of this? And then a motion to change?
My other thought is maybe we need to review how much the pavilion is used in, as a whole and then determine what our cost and our revenue is. Do you have that? I think that's what we should do. I, I think we should review the costs and, and the revenues we do make. And then we would have to get a list of who uses it that we don't know or don't charge. And then maybe bring something back to you on that. We could leave it this way, but then it would end up being like a memorandum of understanding or something after that.
No, thanks for your help. But I, I think, I'm sorry that we've, you know, uncovered a.
Don't be sorry. No, I, I like to make sure that we've got all our opportunities for revenue out. And if there are some that we don't want to go forward with, that's exactly what we're supposed to do, right? Is have you guys debated, see the pros and cons? And, and again, we can do some double checks. I think that's perfectly fine. Yeah.
I often find myself talking about our, our municipal partners and the Rotary Club, you know what I mean? And when, when you say that, you need to mean it too. And I think that there's good reason to respect that as a partnership and try to accommodate that. And as I say, there's probably a few other cases that we should be aware of too because the, the Culture Foundation is, is an example. Better, better closure. The, is another example of, most of the funds are like flow-through. They're, they're going right directly back into the hall.
Yeah.
And so.
And I think there's also a lot of not-for-profits that like to use our, you know, center and our buildings. And again, I think that's where it may feel a little bit slanted to a couple of particular groups, not all of them. So just to throw that bug in your ear, that all not-for-profits struggle to make enough money. And some of them, you know, would like to use some of our facilities as well. And so while I get the name of Rotary on the Rotary Pavilion, but I just think in the concept and the spirit of why we would waive their charges is somewhat because we know how good they are doing in the community. I just also believe that there's a lot of other not-for-profits doing really great things in our community as well. And that the $60 or the rental, like I say, of the community center, these, this bites into what they don't really have is an operating budget. So just for consideration.
Counselor Bartley?
I do apologize for bringing this up. I promised this meeting it'll only be 10 minutes. We're already at a half an hour. I hear what you're saying about the other nonprofits, but they didn't build the thing. Okay? So I stand beside, behind what I said. They built it and I think they should either have a free rate or a reduced rate. I'm slanting towards the free rate and the, you can always say. I'm slanting towards the free rate and the, you can always say, they built it. Right, I know we fixed it, but they built it. The other nonprofits, they didn't build it. So that's my, that's.
Other items on this, you know, report that you want to question about or offer any suggestions? Otherwise, we can entertain a motion to, well, in fact, we do have a recommendation to, to. I just got to find it. Right? All right, yes. And I, we move out before we actually pass the, the 25 fees and charges as amended or?
We're not passing anything today, today's just a public meeting. So we're in committee of the whole for discussion. Once council is discussed, we can move out and adjourn.
And I didn't read here, but the public knows that they were welcome here tonight. But I can't remember them ever coming out to this event. But, yeah, Council Bartley?
Sorry, Deputy Mayor, or Mary Cantner. So if we change what I brought up, do we have to have another public meeting?
The only question I have, the only question I have is in our fees and charges, it doesn't say that we're specifically charging Rotary. So that's why we don't have to do that.
So anything else? If not, I'm going to ask for a motion to move out of committee of the whole. Move second by Concierge and Deputy Mayor Kivany, all in favor? And with that, I declare this meeting adjourned.